Welcome to the June 5, 2017 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Reverend Charlotte Summers from North Minister Presbyterian Church with us this evening to lead us in the invocation. So please stand for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would just come to the podium, Re- thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. It's great to be here tonight. Let us pray. In the words of the great poet E.E. Cummings, "Oh God, we thank you for most this amazing day. We thank you for the leaping green spirits of the trees and the eternal blue of the sky, and we thank you for everything that is in the spirit of yes. Thank you for the energy of new life all around us in this season of spring. And thank you, God, for this great welcoming city of Troy and the devotion of its leadership. Help us to never take their efforts for granted. As we've come together for the business of this evening, be with those around the world and nearby who need our prayers and our help. We pray especially for an end to violence and for peace to unite us as one people in this country and between all nations. In your wisdom, oh God, blow through us with your spirit, a spirit of love, kindness, mercy, compassion, and justice for all people. Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Here.
Councilmember McCown?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
All present, our first order of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have four this evening. C1 is a very important presentation to the Mayor and City Council for the 2017 OPA Fest. And I will call Cindy Stewart, our Community Affairs Director, to the podium and she'll make some important introductions. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As we all know, June is a very fun month in the city of Troy because we have the annual OPA Fest at St. Nick's Church. And tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce the Paracas family. There's George, Eric, Nicholas, and Tina are going to come up and tell you a little bit about OPA Fest. And their mom.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members. Thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm here with four of my children and we'd like to talk to you a little bit about OPA Fest and then we'd like to present some delicious Greek pastries, which we hope you'll enjoy.
We want to invite all of you in the entire city of Troy to our annual OPA Fest, which will take place on June 23rd, 24th, and 25th at St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church at Quirks in Rattles.
Some of the activities will include live music, cooking demonstrations, a Greek coffee house, Greek dance performances, a kids' area with rides and games, raffles and prizes. This year, for the first time ever, there will be a yas cook-off between yas, which are grandmas, from St. George's and St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church. This should be a very exciting event that all should attend. Thank you.
It's from 4:00 to 11:00 on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday's from noon to 8:00. And there's no parking actually on site, so you can shuttle in from Walsh College, which is on Liverny. So, thank you so much. We hope everyone can make it.
Thank you.
And I just want to show the pieces real fast.
Looks like your daughter wants to say something there.
We have a few different ones. Most people are familiar with the baklava. This is galato pureco, which is cream-filled. This is gata ifi, which is honey pastry. Melamakaruna are also honey cookies. And then the gurapieades are like sugar cookies. So we hope you enjoy. There's a couple of them here. You wanted to say something?
Hi.
I went to Yajina's. I went to Yajina's house.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Were you going to recess for that? Thank you so much.
I should have had those for that closed session we had. It's okay, we have another one coming up. Thank you so much. It's an important festival for the city of Troy and it's always a great time. I look forward to it. Thank you. Next on the agenda is C2, and we are going to table C2 this evening until the next council meeting due to the teacher had an important obligation. So he couldn't be here this evening, so. Next is C3, an important proclamation to recognize Reverend Charlotte Summers on her retirement from North Minister Presbyterian Church. And after that wonderful invocation, I don't think you should retire. If I could meet you at the podium, Reverend, I'd like to present that proclamation. She had a great party and I had a previous commitment and I couldn't be there or I would have been there, but congratulations on behalf of the city of Troy and Troy City Council. It's my honor and privilege to present this proclamation to you, Charlotte, for 13 years of service at North Minister Presbyterian Church. And if I could read it, I'd like to. Whereas Reverend Charlotte, do we just call you Charlotte? Is that okay? Was a member of the First Presbyterian Church in Birmingham at the age of 10. That's incredible. And graduated from Seehome High School. She began her spiritual education by earning her undergraduate degree at the College of Worcester in Worcester, Ohio, majoring in religion. She then received her Master's of Divinity degree from Harvard Divinity School in 1984. And whereas Reverend Charlotte continued her education at several notable seminaries and schools, in 1998, she received her diploma in the Art of Spiritual Direction from San Francisco Theological Seminary. Her focus on education and spirituality, they gave me a lot of hard ones to pronounce here tonight, has led to her, led her on pilgrimage journeys?
Journeys.
And help me with this one. Teze Community in France?
Teze.
Teze? Studying Celtic Christianity in Ireland, and most recently to Ionia Community in Scotland. And whereas Reverend Charlotte served as associate pastor at First Presbyterian Church in Greenwich, Connecticut, and then as an associate pastor of Parish Life at West Side Presbyterian in Ridgewood, New Jersey. You've traveled. And whereas Reverend Charlotte joined North Minister Presbyterian Church as a pastor in 2004. Since joining North Minister Presbyterian Church, she has been very active in Detroit Presbyterian and is dedicated to promoting social justice and peace, especially among religions both locally and globally. And whereas Reverend Charlotte was one of the earliest members and served as conveyor of the Troy Area Interfaith Group for many years. The group's first event, the Interfaith National Day of Prayer, was hosted by North Minister Presbyterian Church. She has started monthly Taia Services and Baby Basics Outreach Program. And whereas Reverend Charlotte also spearheaded the mission to create and fund the Community Interfaith Labyrinth located at North Minister's North Grounds, which was dedicated in 2008 by the Troy Interfaith Group. It was a symbol of the peace and harmony between various religious traditions in our community. The Interfaith Labyrinth is open year-round for all to walk the path and mediate, pray, dream, find peace, or ponder. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Troy extends special recognition to Reverend Charlotte Summers for her selfless and tireless service to our community and her dedication to her congregation at the North Minister Presbyterian Church. And be it further resolved that Detroit City Council and all the Troy residents congratulate Reverend Charlotte Summers for her 13 years of dedication and commitment, and we wish her continued success in all future endeavors. Reverend Charlotte Summers will be missed not only by her congregation, but the entire Troy community. Presented this fifth day of June, but I signed this on the 21st day of May 2017, signed by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations, Reverend, and thank you so much for what you've done for our community. Thank you.
It's a great honor to receive this and to hear the history of my life. I so appreciate it. I am staying in Troy, so I do hope to continue to be involved in events here and in various councils, et cetera. So, thank you again, Mayor.
Next on the agenda is C4, a proclamation to recognize Gary Wood, the 2017 Firefighter of the Year. And if I could get Chief Dave Roberts to come forward and help me with an introduction and I'll make a presentation this evening to Gary. Come on on this side.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Each year, the Fire Department selects one of our members as its Firefighter of the Year. And as the Mayor and City Council may recall from a couple of weeks ago, we had our annual appreciation and recognition program where we announced that this year's recipient is firefighter Gary Wood from Fire Station Number Five. So tonight, we'd like to present Gary with a proclamation indicating him as our Firefighter of the Year for 2017.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Good to see you. Good to see you. Gary, on behalf of the city of Troy and the Troy City Council, it's my honor to present to you a proclamation to honor you as the 2017 Firefighter of the Year. Whereas Gary Wood became the principal at Troy's Costello Elementary School in 1981. Three years later, he became a volunteer firefighter, joining Fire Station Number Five 33 years ago on April 11, 1984. And whereas his selection as Firefighter of the Year is due to his many years of dedication to the Troy Fire Department, having served with honor and dignity in all of his roles at Station Five, including firefighter, lieutenant, captain, and station assistant chief. Gary Wood has served as an officer for 18 of his 33 years on the Troy Fire Department. And whereas Gary is an excellent role model for the probationary members and has been recognized for his efforts with several awards. Station Member of the Year, Station Number Five, two Safe Driving Awards, two Merit Service Awards, a unit commendation. He is also a top responder from Station Five. And whereas Gary retired from teaching after 39 years with the Troy School District in 2013, but his passion for teaching and bettering the future of Troy was far from over. With his many years of experience with the Fire Department, coupled with his desire to educate, Gary has dedicated countless hours to teach, mentor, and work with all the new probationary firefighters. And whereas Gary is described as a tireless advocate for training and works to inspire others to always give their best to the Troy Fire Department. Gary has also championed the training of new members specifically for topics like driver's training and apparatus operation. Fire safety and preparedness are some of the key elements that he continues to emphasize to all of the members. And whereas Gary is an excellent role model for the probationary members and has been recognized for his efforts with several awards that I already talked about. And whereas a longtime Troy resident, Gary and his wife Joan are very proud of their children. Son Will, who followed in his father's legacy and served as a volunteer firefighter in Troy for 10 years. And daughter Sarah. So now therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council of the city of Troy does hereby join with the citizens of Troy to express sincere congratulations to Gary Wood on the occasion of being chosen 2017 Firefighter of the Year by the Troy Fire Department. Be it further resolved that the City Council commends Gary on his achievements, leadership, and dedicated service to the citizens of Troy. Presented this fifth day of June 2017, assigned by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations, Gary. Well deserved. Thank you. Thank you very much. I am so honored to have received this award. It's just, I'm just a small microcosm of what the city and this Fire Department is. We have tremendous volunteers. We have a tremendous administration, a supportive City Council, and a new chief that's taking us in new direction. And I'm very honored to still be a part of it, even though I'm starting to get a little gray on the temple. Most of all, I want to thank my wife, who for 33 years has put up with being dropped off at restaurants on the corner, left at home on holidays, thank goodness with just her family, and many of those occasions. And if we can plan some of these events to occur. I've been blessed to be a part of the city of Troy since 1972 when I came here. I've seen it grow. I've seen the department grow, and I've seen wonderful, wonderful things. It is the city of tomorrow today. Mayor, thank you so much. City Council, Chief Roberts, I'm so honored. Thank you. Next on the agenda is C5, a proclamation to proclaim June 2017 as Men's Health Month in the city of Troy. And I'd like to present a proclamation to Dr. Michael Lutz, who's with the Michigan Institute of Urology and Men's Health Foundation.
Thank you. It's good to see you again. Thanks for what you do. Thank you.
On behalf of the City Council, I'd like to present this proclamation for Men's Health Month, June 2017. And that's why I'm wearing my blue tie. You're supposed to wear blue.
It's in there.
Oh, it's in there, okay.
Got it.
Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas men who are educated about the value that preventive health can play in prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive family members will be more likely to participate in health screenings. Fathers who maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models for their children and have happier, healthy children. And whereas the Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop a national men's health awareness period as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventive health practices. And whereas the Men's Health Month website has been established at www.menshealthmonth.org and features resources and information about awareness events and activities, including "Wear Blue for Men's Health." And whereas Men's Health Month focuses on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, prostate, testicular, and colon cancer. And whereas Dr. Michael Lutz and the Michigan Institute of Urology Men's Health Foundation is honoring our first responders, the men in red, white, and blue this year, in an effort to bring their health issues caused by their career to light during Men's Health Month. In partnership with the Michigan Institute of Urology, for the month of June, they will be offering free prostate cancer screenings for all first responders in honor of Men's Health Month. And now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and the City Council of the city of Troy hereby recognizes June 2017 as Men's Health Month and urges all men to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. And be it further resolved that we encourage all of our citizens to pursue preventive health practices and early detection efforts throughout the year in order to live long and healthy lives. Presented this fifth day of June 2017, Doctor, signed by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations and thank you for what you do for our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's funny, he asked if I wanted to say something. I've never been shy in words. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. No, I'm never shy. You know, we've been doing this now for nine years and it all started here, in Troy. At Detroit Mayor, we did the first men's health event ever held in this nation, and we had 750 men show up when they said no one would ever show. And so every year, we decide to do something that takes a stand and says something special. And this year, we decided to do something for those who protect and serve. And I think that really speaks volumes. We have to do something for those who take care of us. And that's really something that I think is lost in translation. We forget, we forget how important our first responders are, those who take life's risks and maybe not even know it. And so our community needs to know that the risks that they take in our behoves and the things that they do and sacrifice for all of us. And so we can share their message. We can tell their story. We can let the community know the importance of the men of the red, white, and blue. And so this year, the month of June, we're going to be telling their story, their story to the community and how important they are within our community because they are our superheroes. They are the ones that we look to as our superheroes. Now, we may be having Captain America come to our run at the Detroit Zoo on Father's Day, and that is a superhero, but he's not the one that's going to answer your phone when you dial 911. So we just want to say, take this chance to join us and join our foundation, learn a little bit about us and the things that we do in the community, and share that message of health to your family and also support our first responders and just say thank you for your service and thank you.
That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. Next on the agenda are carryover items. There are none this evening. There are no public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. So there is one postponed item this evening that we will take care of. H1, Purchasing Cooperatives Blanket Resolutions. And I'll introduce Tom Darling, our Financial Services Director. And I see Mary Beth Mertz, our Purchasing Director, is here also. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you. What you have before you is a request to reaffirm the city's use of cooperative agreements along with authorizing administrative approval for non-capital items over $10,000. The city manager establishes a Plan, Process, and Education, or PPE, committees to address 2016 and 2017 strategic initiatives, right, involving review of city ordinances and policies. It was during these reviews that was noticed that Chapter 7.5.2 of the city code requires a unanimous approval by City Council of those present to use cooperatives as an alternative to competitive bidding in some instances. After significant time and effort by our city clerk, Ms. Dixon, and our purchasing manager, Ms. Mertz, it was noticed that some of these resolutions went as far back as 1998. As such, the committee recommended that these cooperative agreements be reviewed by City Council on a periodic basis, let us know that they're out there and how we use them. In addition, during our review, further investigation showed that some resolutions from 1999 appeared that additional language was added to include the administrative approval of non-capital items over $10,000. Now, while these resolutions are documented as past resolutions, they did not receive a unanimous vote. This has led to much debate and controversy as to whether it was the prior council's intention of the subject matter being a deauthorized use of administrative approvals over $10,000, which would only require a majority vote, or the use of the cooperative agreements themselves, which again requires a unanimous vote. We're here tonight to try and make things clear going forward as to our intent. We believe the agenda memo sufficiently demonstrates how the city leverages the use of our cooperative agreements to provide efficiency in delivering supplies and services to our residents in a timely manner. We also believe that the memo demonstrates the advantages of using the combined purchasing powers of governmental units inherent to our cooperatives. Finally, we have divided the resolution really into two parts. The first one authorizes the use of cooperatives as an alternative to competitive bidding when deemed the best interest of the city and requires a unanimous vote in accordance with Chapter 7.5-2 of the city code. The second resolution is to authorize administrative approval for non-capital purchases over $10,000 when obtained through a cooperative agreement. And this resolution would require a majority vote. So that's why we have in front of us, trying to move forward in a clear and consistent manner.
Thank you. I don't know if there's any other questions from council, but I'm the one that asked to have this pulled, so I guess I'll talk first, if that's okay. I met with city manager Kishnik and Mr. Darling and discussed some of the issues that I had that have been cleared up. I think they did a great job looking into this and providing information to me. I think they did a great job looking into this and providing information to me. I'm completely satisfied that we've addressed all of the issues that at least I had. So unless there are any other questions or concerns, I'm ready to move this resolution that was placed on our table this evening. City Clerk Dixon, would it be best to separate these because one is unanimous and one is majority?
Right, that's right. We've separated them just to make it a little bit clearer than it had been voted on in the past.
Okay, thank you. I'll move H1, I'll call it A for now. Whereas, city administration recommends participation in the cooperative purchasing programs when in the best interest of the city, therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council authorizes participation in the cooperative purchasing programs listed below to satisfy bid requirements when in the best interest of the city. And there are listed the MITD, which is with the State of Michigan, Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Program, the Suburban Library Cooperative, REMAC, R-E-M-C, which is the Regional Media Center Association of Michigan, NIGP, which is U.S. Communities, MICTA, which is Michigan Collegiate Telecommunications Association, National IPA, which is National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance, NJPA, which is the National Joint Power Alliance. Move by the Chair, supported by Councilman McCollin, that we approve H1A as read into the record. Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion is unanimous. Next is H1B. Whereas, city administration recommends participation in the cooperative purchasing programs when in the best interest of the city, therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council approves blanket authorization parentheses S to administratively approve purchases for operating supplies and services above the $10,000 limit obtained through an approval cooperative, except for those capital, which are 401 fund purchases, which shall be presented to City Council for review and approval. Move by the Chair, supported by Councilman McCown, that we approve H1B as read. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Thanks for all your work. Thank you, Mary Beth, for cleaning that up. Next on the agenda is regular business. I1, our Board and Committee Appointments. I have two appointments this evening. First is the appointment of Caitlin Ho to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the student term that expires 7/31/2018, and Claire Ho, the student representative to the Planning Commission for the term that expires 7/31/2018. Move by the Chair, supported by Councilman Baker, that we appoint Caitlin Ho to the Global Troy Advisory Committee and Claire Ho to the Planning Commission for the terms that expire 7/31/2018. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks to those students for stepping forward and volunteering to those both important committees. We'll turn it over to Mayor Protem Hoderek for City Council appointments.
I have, thank you, Mayor. I have three appointments tonight to the Charter Revision Committee. John Coolidge for the term expiring 4/30/2018, and reappointments of Frank Howerlich and Cynthia Wilshere for terms expiring 4/30/2020.
Move by Mayor Protem Hoderek and supported by Councilman McCollin, that we appoint John Coolidge, Frank Howerlich, Cynthia Wilshere to the Charter Revision Committee for the terms that expire 4/30/2018 for Mr. Coolidge and 4/30/2020 for Mr. Howerlich and Ms. Wilshere. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I4 is a subrecipient agreement between Oakland County and the City of Troy for the 2017 Medical Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant. I see Chief Mayor is here to introduce this item. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, Troy Police Department has a police officer assigned to the Oakland County Narcotics Enforcement Team, known as NET. This is a multi-jurisdictional drug enforcement team that enforces drug laws in Oakland County and the metropolitan Detroit area. NET has entered into a grant agreement with the State of Michigan allowing reimbursement for qualifying NET-related costs, including overtime costs associated with enforcement of the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. This annual agreement was previously approved by the City Council last year, and we received $5,582 in overtime reimbursement for calendar year 2016. We ask that you approve this annual agreement. The attached agreement between Oakland County and the City of Troy, it's required for purposes of receiving reimbursement of receiving qualified overtime reimbursement. I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McCollin?
I'd like to move item I4, subrecipient agreement between Oakland County and the City of Troy for 2017 Medical Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant as printed.
Support.
Move by Councilman McCollin and supported by Mayor Protem Hoderek, that we approve I4, the subrecipient agreement between Oakland County and the City of Troy for 2017 Medical Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant as printed. Discussion? The vote, excuse me, the vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the Consent Agenda. Anyone wish to pull a Consent Agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the Consent Agenda as printed.
Support. Move by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman McCollin, that we approve all items on the Consent Agenda as presented and printed in the Agenda Packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a Consent Agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next, our Memorandums and Future Council Agenda Items. There are none listed this evening. We will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I will call on Larry Chiappelli, Troy resident, who wishes to speak.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm not much of a public speaker, obviously. I don't memorize anything and try to read off anything to anybody, but I was just glad to be here and I'm here tonight just to tell you goodbye because I'm just getting really busy with my business and I'm not able to come anymore. I've really enjoyed it all and know how everything works here. It's pretty cool and I appreciate how you support the community and let them be involved in everything too as well. And I feel like the topics that I originally came to you forward with you last month in regards to Sylvan Glenn and of course, I've always been talking about the blighted landscaping in Troy. I feel that those have been addressed by Kurt and I meet with Paul Evans this week to go over things and maybe help lay out a plan for that. And I just appreciate you listening to me and I appreciate the support you've given me on that there, even though it isn't something that I, satisfied me totally, but at least you've supported me. And I guess as a businessperson, I realize that I can't control anything but my own self. And so sometimes I appear too overzealous about things and maybe bug everybody a little bit and email somebody and write and talk about things, but I really mean no harm and I really want to act like somebody that is part of the solution, not part of the problem. And one thing I wanted to say is, a lot of people don't realize that Troy is the city of tomorrow today. And with that in mind, I'm submitting a proposal that I would like to see you guys overlook. I'd like to see about Grandma's Gardens becoming automated. I know that seems kind of far-fetched, but I'm getting a little old and I, in life, and I just feel like I want to try and modernize my place a little bit, so I've submitted that for approval. Maybe someday, if you look at it, you can talk about it with me, maybe get the residents in, because I feel it's important for myself to go in that direction right now. What that involves is modern thinking. I contacted Automation Alley and working with them on autonomous tractor, maybe some robotics, some really cool things that I've got designed already and that may be something I'd like to see you guys look at and consider with the Troy residents and everything. So on that note, I just want to tell everybody, thank you for your support. I appreciate the Troy police the most because I wish I could give them a $500 check, you know, in my support, but I can't afford that. So they've been with me and supported me on any little thing that ever happened and Glenn and Brian, everybody's always supported me on any little thing I've come up with. And I just want to tell you, thank you very much and I'm not going to be able to come anymore because I'm just getting so busy with my place.
Thank you. Well, that's a good thing when you get too busy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your input.
Okay, thank you.
Have a great night. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, any response from Council or staff. There are no Council referrals this evening, so we will move to Council comments. Any Council comments this evening? Councilman McCollin?
I would like to comment on one thing, two things actually. First thing, our steady hand guiding the ship, our city clerk, Ms. Dixon, had a bit of an event this past weekend. She was married and I think I can speak for everyone and say congratulations. The second thing I want to talk about, at the last meeting, I referred, someone had given me a call about some suspicious-looking activity and I said, I talked to the chief for a couple of minutes last meeting and he gave me a call the next day. There was an investigation done and a bust was done and the Troy Police Department did a fantastic job. So I first wanted to thank the Police Department for their constant, constant work. They're keeping us safe even when we don't see it. So great job there to the Police Department. And then also just the residents, if, you know, something looks out of place, it never hurts to raise your hand and ask the question. So thank you to the person who called me and then thank you to the chief and the Police Department as well.
Thank you. Any other Council comments? Councilman Henderson?
Just three things. First off, I'm sorry the doctor left so early, but I'm a proud recipient of some of their handiwork, unfortunately, but fortunately, so they...
You might want to explain that.
Yeah, well, so about three weeks into my term on City Council, I had a robotic prostatectomy through Michigan Urology Institute and Dr. Reilly, one of his partners, is the one who performed the surgery. So, and I was 49 years old at the time, and so I just want to encourage the police officers and fire department, take them up on the offer to get checked out. Early detection is never, never too early. You should get those tests done. They're simple, they're fast, and it can save a lot of time and good health. Also, Cogs and Kegs, this is their Pedal for a Purpose, Monday, June 12th, at the Griffin Claw Brewery in Birmingham. This is through, for the Michigan Institute of Urology. It's a $30 pre-registration, it's a bike ride, $35 onsite registration, and registration includes a custom water bottle and post-ride celebration where you will enjoy a 16-ounce pour of Griffin Claw's Mr. Big Sky and Bar Bites. So I know the mayor might do something like that.
I'm in on it.
And then I saw earlier today on Facebook that Sedona Tap House, owned by our Senator Marty Nolenberg, this month has $7 steaks and $1 of the seven goes to Michigan Institute of Urology as well. So those are the three pieces that needed to be said, I think, so, thanks.
Good stuff. Any other comments? I have one important comment. I got asked just yesterday, when is the dog park going to open? So I have wonderful news to announce tonight and we'll be putting out a press release soon, but the grand opening for the Daisy Knight Dog Park, which is part and home to the Peak, Terry, and Barbara Knight Park, which is across the street, will have the grand opening on September 30th, 2017. Of course, everyone is aware that the park was developed with public-private partnership between North Point Development and Stonecrest, which is the assisted living, senior living center that is almost complete right next to the dog park. And certainly without the private contribution of Barbara Knight in the memory of Terry Knight, we wouldn't have a dog park. So we want to always thank Barbara for her wonderful contribution in making it happen. So this summer, the city will be connecting the park to the subdivision to the east. Mr. Savage will be ecstatic to hear that. It will be a paved trail and they will be installing fencing for a small and large off-leash dog area. So if you want any additional information, go to www.troydogpark.org. You can find out everything you need to know, but we're excited to say September 30th, 2017, the park and the dog park will open, so, good news. I just had somebody ask me yesterday, when's it going to open, so, it's good news. Any other Council comments? Anything on the reports that were in the Agenda Packet this evening? Anything on the reports that were in the agenda packet this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy, which are not residents of Troy and not from Troy businesses. There is a closed session this evening, so we will recess for about five minutes, reconvene in the boardroom for a closed session. Thank you for coming this evening.